Okay, good evening and welcome to the May 9, 2023 meeting of the Town of Eastchester Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is Tuesday, May 9. We start our meetings by the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise. Okay. While getting settled in, let me go over some of the ground rules for the meeting, as I do every meeting. Firstly, we obey Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Order. Couple of those highlights mean that firstly, we take action based upon motion, vote, and resolution. And particularly for new applications, what we do is we give the applicant an opportunity to explain their application. For new applicants, just to understand that your application is marked "submitted," so it's a public record. So your application, the exhibits, and any public sentiment and commentary on the matter is all part of the record. So you don't need to read your entire application. It won't hurt your application, but it's not necessary. And then as a general rule, the board would have an opportunity to ask questions or make comments, and the public will be heard, and the board would have an opportunity to recap. So that is how we conduct our meeting, and at this point now, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 11, 2023 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to call the roll. Before I do that, the following application has been adjourned for the June meeting. That's 2304 28 Reynolds Place. Before I get to the resolution calendar, let me call the roll on items of new business. Application 23-15, that's Sal's Market. Is the applicant present? Are you ready to proceed? Okay, thank you. Item number 2, 23-1638 Tuckahoe Avenue. The applicant's ready to proceed, thank you. And number 3, 23-17, 16 Reynolds Place. Ready to proceed? Great. Okay. All right, so let's start with our one item on our resolution calendar. And for that, I make a motion to adopt an approval of the resolution for application 2308, which is 9 Overlook Avenue. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. DeMarco, okay, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved 3 to 2 with condition, there's a landscaping condition attached to that approval. Okay. Now, new business. Item number one of new business, 23-15 Sal's Market and Pizzeria. If you could come forward, state your name and address for the record, and proceed. And this is, while you're doing that, this is an area variance for a proposed two-story addition. If you don't mind, if you could speak from the microphone behind you.
Did you bring slices for everyone?
Did you bring?
Did you bring slices for everyone?
It should, yeah.
Okay, yes, my name is Peter Gado Jr. I'm the architect for the applicant.
Thank you.
I have in front of me also, I'm not sure if I give this to you, also proof of the...
That goes to the head of our building department, Mr. Valenti.
Okay. Thanks so much. Okay, set this up for a second. So thanks for your meeting tonight. So I have a few slides, a few boards, which are part of your packet, and a couple additional ones just from photographs to show you today. So I'm sure you know the property, I've seen the property, and I've been to the property, but it's an existing deli and food service place along the road. Currently, parking is for the customers just in front, and access in the back is for the owner and the person who purveyors the supplies. So we are looking to do an addition in the back, and then a second-floor office for the owner and the site, and just some additional photos you have here, too. These were taken across the street. This is how it's set back tucked in. This is from the side, those photos from the other side, which I know some construction's ongoing right now. And again, this is a quick refresher. These are photos in the back. The project essentially entails an extension off the back, which is on the ground floor, really just another walk-in case for drinks and such. And since the building is tight, and they didn't want to have any interior subtraction from the already tight space, we're coming out with it, the proposed addition. And with that, we have a staircase in the back that goes to a second floor, which is primarily served as an office and a record-keeping accounting office on the second floor. So that's what we're seeking. In terms of the variances, you saw we're under in height and coverage, and all the essential variances in terms of what we're allowed to do. It's actually a four-story zone, going one story. And the reason we're here tonight, I believe, is because of the parking and some of the road conditions set back. What's existing now are the spaces up front. We propose to sort of even clean those up to make it a little more accessible and easier for the customers to negotiate. And then the road, the driveway in the back, is for the parking spaces for the office and for the staff. That's really primarily what that's going to be there for as well. And then allocation for the garbage and dumpsters are sort of along the way where they are currently today. There is 10-foot and a half, 11-foot driving distance, so I think that's a little bit narrower than what's asked. We're seeking relief from those two items, but the spaces are 9 by 22 parking spaces along the back there of the fence, and all the spaces up front are in compliance as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sure. At this time, I open your application up to the board for comments or questions, and I usually go to board members, but before I would, you know, comment on my concerns about parking, traffic, and safety, I just need to ask you, why would this deli convenience-type store use need more office space and a full bath with a shower? Can you explain that?
Yeah. So the owner's there, it's essentially, they're there all the time, is the short answer. So, and taking care of things, mopping up, whatever they may have to do, he just thought he'd like to freshen up between and between what's happening, the store staff and after-work, counting paperwork, that's what that's explaining to me.
Okay. Reserve anything else I have for later, Mr. Cahalan?
Yeah. I mean, my real concern on this application is the driveway. I mean, you don't have turning radiuses there. Two cars trying to come down that driveway are not going to fit. There's no way that's going to happen. I'm familiar with that property. Even now, when you back out, it's very, you know, it looks deep, but when you start backing out, the turning radius to get back onto 22 is very difficult. I mean, I understand you're trying to shrink down the width, I get it. You know, we require nine, you're putting in, you know, eight-point-something, which I really don't have an issue with to try and get the spaces, but I don't see the turning radiuses, and I really don't see the complacency for the 10 paces, the 10 fully compliant parking spaces, and deficiency of five. You know, that's a 50% variance you're requiring. That's just a tough ask. You know, there's nothing else you can do, there's, you know, that's the way the property sits, but that driveway is not going to work.
You hit it exactly right on the head, and we did try many different combinations, and the site is unique, it's pinched in by the side property lines, there's borders next door, and it's existed this way for a long, long, long time, as you know. The driveway is plenty wide to come around the turn, and because there's no space in the corner, there's sort of a K-turn action to come through here. Customers, as you do know also, I'm sure, never go in the back, as it is right now. Never, nobody does. Everybody parks up front, and then however they negotiate and sort of get out with about 15, or 18 feet from the actual road, the sidewalk, that's what they kind of do. So because of the property pinching and the building existing, we're not cutting the building down, that's where this type comes in. It's actually a little bit wider, but we're leaving a little bit of, you know, proper conditions around the corner for what's happening in the back area there.
Yeah, I understand what you're trying to do here, but I got to tell you, you're not going to convince me on this application.
Anything further, Mr. Cahalan?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No questions.
Mr. Nerzia?
A couple of comments. First thing, if you could just clarify, the parking spot on the right-hand side of the building, which I guess is the north side, yeah, that parking spot, is that employee parking, or is that for customer parking?
It's a good question. Generally, the owner feels that generally it will never be used by customers, because the frequency of customers is really accommodated through here, and this is going to be maybe for a staff person or someone that works in there. That's the plan.
Yeah, okay. Then, my concern is also with the parking. It's kind of like the Wild West, the way it is right now. You don't know where to go in, go out. Nothing's really delineated, but I see on your plans one entryway, one exitway, but if somebody comes in to the parking lot, and there are some cars right there, I know you said nobody's ever going to park on the side or in the back, but if those spots are occupied, and somebody drives in, I doubt that they're going to exit and turn around whichever way they need to turn around to get back in. So just for convenience's sake, I think they are going to go to the right-hand side and look, or drive to the back or to the side. So that's just one concern that I have about, whatever the busy times of your store are, somebody coming in, not wanting to completely exit, which means you've got to go up or down a block to come around and loop around again. So my concern is that they will be parking on the side or in the back, and then they're going to see the employee parking, and then they're going to have to back out of that area. So I've got a big concern about that. So that's just my general comment right now, so I'm not sure how you could address that.
It's a great thought, and you're right. Because it functions this way totally, you know, I think that, you know, maybe if we are required by space, perhaps the spaces for the office space, by the code. So if we were to designate some assigned staff only back there, then that might prevent people even going back there. So we would be code-compliant, and then having safety factors as well, so.
Okay.
It's a good thought, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DeMarco?
No questions.
Okay, I reserve my commentary. Until later, I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeMarco, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I close the public hearing on this. Is there a second to my motion? Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. Cahalan?
Yeah, one of the things I just wanted to point out is, they have to have a handicap spot, and they're also making that noncompliant. And I see that there's a walkway on the plans, but the driver's still exiting on the other side where it's tight. So either you're going to park in the walkway and move your tires over, so, I mean, there's just a lot to this application. I mean, and to your point, I didn't say it before, but, you know, putting a full bathroom, I understand that, but that also lends itself, too, to an illegal apartment. So, and you know, I mean, we're not, I'm not saying he's going to do that, but it's sure, building a staircase around back sure makes it easy to have an illegal apartment.
Well, Mr. Cahalan, I understand completely, and to further your comment, I usually comment last, but it'd be easier just to comment now, that the application, in terms of the area variance as it relates to a detriment to the community, the applicant unfortunately is in a position where, as it is, the parking is very difficult there. They park in the right-of-way, it's almost one entire curb cut. People will run through that curb cut and run through a light that they can't even see, so that would be my objection to making it more of an issue, but I guess I have to quote my high school Ford and prep, Father Sullivan, when he said, "It would take a willing suspension of disbelief to accept the premise that you're going to put a full bath in the back and expand an office at a time when office space is less important for a use that has no need for an office space to not believe that it's eventually going to become residential."
Better love those Jesuits.
Right. So I'm going to say that, just like what you're saying, that we cannot impute that, we have to assume it'll be used the way it is. I can't imagine why anyone would want it that way. So that would be my commentary on the application and how it applies to the area variance. Mr. Miller, any further comments in closing?
Nope. You know me, I don't cast aspersions.
Mr. Nerzia?
Nothing.
Mr. DeMarco?
Nothing.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meetings, or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your application.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, new business item number two. This is 231638 Tuckahoe Avenue. Name and address for the record, and please proceed.
My name is John Yanisito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Chimeli, the owners of the subject property. We are proposing additions and alterations to the existing single-family residence located at 38 Tuckahoe Avenue. The proposed scope of work will include construction of a two-story addition at the front and rear of the existing residence, which is highlighted in yellow on the site plan. We're also proposing a new front-entry portico and a new wood deck at the rear, and we're proposing the construction of a pool cabana at the rear of the property behind the existing swimming pool. We are requesting one area variance this evening for the total gross floor area. The proposed floor area is 3,493 square feet, and the permitted is 3,040 square feet, an increase of 453 square feet, or 15%. The existing lot of this property is more than double the required area for this zone, and the 15% increase in floor area is proportionally adequate for this size of lot. The proposed additions will comply with all other zoning setbacks and coverage requirements, and will not have any adverse character or environmental impact on the neighborhood. I'll quickly come over and just go through the plans and elevations. Here we have the first-floor plan. So the front elevation here is basically an expansion of the existing entrance hall, which will become a two-story entrance hall, and at the rear, the expansion will include a new family room and kitchen space. On the second floor, the addition at the rear will include a new master suite and one additional bedroom. And then here are the exterior elevations. At the front, the two-story entry vestibule and the new portico. The garage will remain in the same place, and we're creating a new roofline along the front. On the right side, this is the addition at the rear of the property. This is the existing mass of the house, and the two-story addition at the front. And then at the rear, we have the two-story addition within the wood deck, and on the left side, the two-story addition and a deck at the rear. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Yanisito. Okay, to the board. Mr. Cahalan, any questions or comments?
Well, yeah, I mean, can you talk to us about drainage?
So drainage? Sure.
What are you doing for drainage?
So, we're going to add new drywells for all the increased impervious surfaces. We will be in compliance with the required coverage. So right now, I'm showing four drywells at the rear of the property.
What size are they, John?
These are the 330 Coltex. So they're 79 cubic feet of volume per drywell, and they're based on a calculation for the increased impervious surfaces. We will eventually get to an engineering firm, which will do some perk tests and do a design for the drainage, once we get to ARBN planning for review.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
And just to piggyback on Mr. Cahalan's commentary, this comes up frequently with applications like this, that although the public has broad range in being heard on issues, particularly water runoff and drainage, then any application like this must meet all of the building requirements for drainage, runoff, et cetera, and that each application doesn't support its own version of that. So we're really only hearing the 15% increase in square footage and area, and any approval would be subject to all of the requirements of the building department. Mr. Miller, any comments or questions? Mr. Nerzia?
No questions.
Mr. DeMarco?
No questions.
I don't have anything. I make a...
I want to mention that we received letters from two neighbors.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cahalan. They're part of the record, that we've received an email commentary that are part of the record as it relates to this application. Thank you, Mr. Cahalan. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to be heard on this application? Please come forward, one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and proceed.
Hello, I'm Jennifer McCart. This is my husband.
Peter McCart.
Peter McCart. We live at 36 Tuckahoe Avenue, and we've lived there for about 17 years. I just want to introduce myself. I'm a licensed architect and a LEED accredited professional. I have a master's in real estate development, and I've been working in capital planning for the last 20 years or so. It's really hard for us to be here today and talk in opposition to our neighbor's plan, but we're really extremely concerned and want to make the board aware of the severe water situation that we've had in our rear yards. We have a really, quite a high water table in our backyard. When you dig down about three feet, you hit water. Our yards all across in the whole run of the neighborhood, they flood regularly, and most houses have had water in the basement in the past. You know, everyone I've talked to have had water in the basement in the past. When we moved in, the rear third of our apartment was unusable because of groundwater, so in 2007, we put in a whole series of drainage, we put in three drywells, we added a large sump pump in our basement, and then we did French drains in our basement. And then in 2018, we ourselves put on a two-story addition, and we added two more sump pumps. So we, aside from the nor'easter that came through, we haven't had any water in the basement until just recently, when they put in the pool in 2021. So we didn't have any standing water before that, we didn't have any water in the basement, and, you know, since then, we have been getting water. During the storm we had, two weekends ago, we had six inches of water in our basement, and that wasn't even an extremely severe storm. We have three sump pumps, and they were all working, but they just couldn't handle the capacity of water that was coming into our basement. So that's why we got the water, the six inches. I know many of our neighbors, 40 Tuckahoe, 42 Tuckahoe, and 44 Tuckahoe, got water as well recently. I would like to comment on Mr. Yanisito's letter asking for the variance to be granted. His first point, "The addition is keeping with the character and scale of the neighborhood, and no other means is feasible." We disagree. Most of the houses in our neighborhood have put on additions in the past. We put on an addition ourselves, and I'm not aware of any variance that has been asked for in relationship to those additions. To his point that smaller lots are allowed to build more, as you know, the zoning code already takes this into consideration. A larger-than-typical lot is allowed to build a percentage more. You know, you take, you know, over the 5,000-square-foot lot, you take, you know, the difference, and then you multiply it by a factor, and you're allowed to build more to compensate for the larger lot. The letter also says this variance will not have any adverse impact on environmental conditions. We disagree with that. We have a water issue back there already, it's a sensitive site. We're concerned that this will cause problems or aggravate the existing problems in the back there.
And we do understand that there, with the pool there, even with the pool there, they're still within their right with pervious surface, but there's a lot of extreme situations.
Yeah. And then, drywells will be installed. I know they put in three or four drywells when they installed that pool. So they already have drywells, three or four drywells back there. Is the plan to install four more? I see four on the plan. And then is there enough space for seven drywells in the back there? Also, once the water gets to a certain level, the drywells fill up, and then they become ineffective. And then, you know, the final point, the difficulty is self-created, and it's really not a limitation of the property. It's a large property. The code allows a house of 3,040 square feet, which is a large house. So while we fully support the efforts to improve property, we ask the board to consider the existing drainage problem before approving more than is allowed by code.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard on this application?
My name is Manu. I'm from 42 Tuckahoe, and I concur with our neighbors. We had the same issue. Like, two weeks ago, my yard was basically flooded with water, and all the way backed up to the driveway because of all these runoff, and we also have water in our basement. So I think anything that can be done to help us, you know, building a bigger house is going to definitely hurt us in many ways. The whole block, most of the people have water in their basement and water in the backyard already, so, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Would anyone else like to be heard on this? Yeah, come forward, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kathy Secle. I live at 44 Tuckahoe Avenue, and I agree with these people that the water, since the pool went in, has definitely changed. I lived here for 42 years. Occasionally, I would have a problem. If we had a hurricane, I would have a problem. But now, I have a problem if we have four inches of rain. Four inches is not a lot of rain. I don't have one of those big backyards. I'm more towards the corner. So I have a much smaller property, and there's nowhere for the water to go but up into my house. So I would prefer if the things were left status quo and more drywells were put in. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, Mr. Yanisito, would you like to reply?
Yes, so on the drainage, yes, we are compliant on both building coverage and lot coverage for this project. We will have an engineer design a system for the property, which will also get reviewed by the consulting engineers of the town before we're allowed to proceed with the project. And we will make the best effort to keep all runoff on our property with the use of drywells and with the calculations that the engineers come up with based on the perk test that they conduct. On the variance, the floor area variance, the reason I feel it's not substantial is if this was a 5,000-square-foot lot, which is what is required in the zone, the allowable floor area would be 46% of the lot area. With our size lot, even with the variance, our proposed floor area will be 28% of the lot. So we're substantially lower than if you had two 5,000-square-foot lots. Both 5,000-square-foot lots would be allowed to build up to 46% of that lot in their floor area. Our lot is a larger lot, and our square footage would only be 28% of that lot area.
Okay, thank you. All right. Firstly, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. Cahalan? Okay. Back to the board. Mr. Cahalan?
Nothing.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Nerzia?
Nothing.
Mr. DeMarco?
Nothing.
I don't have anything further. I make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The last item on our calendar tonight is new business item number three, 23-1716 Reynolds Place. Come forward, name and address for the record, and this is a front portico addition.
Good evening, board members. My name is Adamo Maiarano from Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the owner, Chris Leasatos, we are proposing basically a front portico over the existing platform. It's situated 16 Reynolds Place. It's an R5 zoning district. So, I guess, as straightforward as they come, there's an existing platform there. The owner would basically like to build this portico, and the reason being that we're here today is asking for, one, the front yard variance, because basically the house is non-conforming with respect to the front setback. With the front open portico, you're allowed to encroach four feet into the required setback, so 30 feet is the required setback. You'd be able to go to 26 feet. The existing house is setback at 27 feet, so the front portico would end up being just about 23 feet. So, we're basically three-foot deficient there. And then, secondary off of that variance, sort of piggybacks, is the overall width of the portico cannot extend more than 30% of the front elevation of the home. That would make it a maximum of nine foot, but because the front platform is already at 11.75 foot aesthetically, it makes the most sense, obviously, to cover the front portico and go from corner to corner with the new columns and basically a flat roof structure. The house is pretty much like a box, so aesthetically, the front portico adds some aesthetic updates to the home as well. And then, just to, again, I don't know if I manage, but it is a little interesting street. The homes are sort of on an angle to the street itself. It's not like, you know, everyone is straight with a 30-foot. So, you can see this side is 35 feet, and this side is 27 feet. So, when you look at, you know, picture one, the home next door, does look like it encroaches a lot further. So, when you're looking down at the street, the portico won't really jump out into the street much. It almost looks like it's lined up with the other homes, but the other homes are at 30-foot setbacks.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay. To the board. Mr. Cahalan?
Nothing.
Miller?
Nope.
Nerzia?
Seems timinist. I have no questions.
Mr. DeMarco?
Nothing.
I agree with Mr. Nerzia, although my father was a math teacher, so I have to incorporate him into this. But that, you're right, it's a rhombus. Did you like that, guys? And it's a square.
Sure.
Sitting, just showing off. Not equally distant to the ends of the rhombus. How did I do them? Okay. So, I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeMarco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Would anyone from the public like to be heard? Okay. Seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Back to the board, because I'm supposed to. Mr. Cahalan?
Nothing.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Nerzia?
Other than half of East Chester's Googling the word rhombus right now. No comments.
Mr. DeMarco?
Nothing.
And, other than the fact that I got to throw rhombus in after 60 years of only using it once, sophomore year geometry, your application's straightforward, and you've answered the five-part test to my satisfaction. I make an, I'm sorry, a motion to resolve this application at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Maiarano. Okay. Before I make my final motion to adjourn the meeting, I just want to remind applicants that if they're considering an application, check our calendar, because we do break in the summer, and we don't decide applications first time on. So, having said that, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting, and we'll see everyone, if there's a second, in the June meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.[1771.83]